The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman to downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, November 12th, 2020.
That sounds good. We received five minutes.
That's always the big step.
Just one more half show, okay? Randy was out there the other day, he said he's been doing those day by day things that he works on. Why don't you do?
I've been long so far.
3:45. 3:45. I heard all of that. Yeah. 6:45. I thought that was an auto or I didn't know anything for me. Yeah, that's my.
I plead with the citizens to the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have Pastor Wofford in here.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings upon our city of Ely. Lord, as we hear of more people coming down with COVID-19, we pray, Lord, for your protection upon all those who are here today and throughout the city. We thank you for how you have watched over us. We pray, Lord, for the health of all the city workers, and especially those who are here today, that they may be, and we thank you for the talents that you've given each of them, that they may be successful in their endeavors. Pray, Lord, that you give them joy in what they do. We pray, Lord, that you help them to understand the needs of the citizens of the city. Pray for wisdom, as many topics are discussed. We pray for the right way, that you lead them through it. Pray, Lord, that you give them joy and confidence in their decisions. We pray, Lord, that you help them to work together, even though some may have different viewpoints, that they can get much accomplished. We say all this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Hey, if we'll move on with the roll call.
Mayor Roberts.
President.
Councilman Clayton.
Here.
Councilman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Spear.
Here.
Councilman Allwirth.
President.
Councilwoman Richards. Here. City Attorney Manuel.
Here.
I'd like to recognize our counsel on the SNS lawsuit, Chris Stanko.
Here.
As an Assistant Frank, your City Treasurer, Travis, your Public Works Supervisor, Craig Craft.
Here.
City Engineer Alver.
Here.
You got it all there?
Hey, thank you. With that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fire chief's work is online. Do you need us? We must commute it at once.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Please state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Kyle Corvax, Director of Courts, for the record. It's been about three weeks, maybe even a month, since I was in here last to talk about the community-wide survey for Broadbed Park that we had partnered on to try to get by and attempt to figure the community of how Broadbed Park could better serve their needs, their family for the activities, and that's what they're looking for. And so just yesterday, we closed out that survey. There was 280 responses that came in. It's a pretty good response for a size of the community. Seventy percent of the people that responded identified as Ely residents, 30% as White Pine County residents. So the city of Ely definitely came out and spoke. There was 25 questions. A lot of the responses were just very, very solid. There was no wishy-washiness, there was no middle of the ground. There was very strong opinions in the questions that we asked and some of the answers that we offered up. But I think the thing that was most telling was the open-ended questions and where we had asked for a lot of these that, you know, was there something that we didn't mention? Could you please write that in or what were your ideas for Broadbed Park? And so those responses were the ones that I found most interesting, very creative, and again, very straightforward in the direction. So what I'm requesting is to potentially get on to the agenda for the next city council meeting, because I think this is more than we can just go over for three minutes. And I'd like to really do a deep dive into these results, and then we can talk about what the next move is and where we'd like to go now that the meeting has spoken. So if you would like to see the results, I certainly could email those to you. But again, I'd like to get on to the council, and since Councilman Allwirth, we kind of partnered on this, if you would be willing to spearhead that charge, that would be great.
You are unmuted.
All right. Well, that's all I have. Thank you again for letting us do this. Thank you, God. Any other public comments?
I'm Manny Chelis, Director, Director of the Vets. Seeing here in the meeting, I'm the founder of the address, head of the State of Business. Your agenda item, it means the resolution is part of next stage effort to take property that belongs to State of Nevada, return it to the city of Ely, and to the Allwirth Foundation. The state accepted that property by request of the city of Ely in 1990 for 30 years, being a steward of the depot and freight building. Today, they'll spend worth of $2.9 million in their restoration and another nearly half a million in its upkeep. Three former attempts have been made through the legislature to transfer the property back, and all of those have failed. I'm not here to tell you what to do tonight. I am here to suggest that possibly we need more time to take a look at this. It's one of the entities involved in this transfer of property, the state museum itself here in Ely, or on no level of the Department of State Museums has been contacted. So we haven't been given the opportunity to say, to give you the information that we have. We haven't been given the opportunity to express any type of what we've done. In the nutshell, what I can tell you is, in the 30 years that the state of Nevada has been here, it's been recognized as one of the most excellent small museums, not just in Nevada, but in America. To be clear, again, there's been no contact with the state museum system at any level regarding this potential transfer. And since we found out about this meeting this afternoon, I respectfully request you give us that opportunity to respond before you take any action on that. I'll be pleased to answer any questions. I appreciate your time, appreciate your hard efforts, and you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, in regards to what Mr. Pitts addressed to you, excuse me, I would not like to see you give up or take that museum back. We can't afford that property. What is given to us by the state, you don't have enough money. Do not take it back. There isn't another individual in this community, let alone elsewhere than I know, that can keep those records up. We need to leave it as is. We cannot take any more debt off. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda items, 10 B1 through 5, you're considering the sale, conditions of sale of the so-called Northern Line. There should be no sale to the SNS until since time that they have paid their track rental fees in full and up to date. Councilman Allwirth failed to collect fees and told Mark Bassett accountable for years while he was city clerk, as well as the treasurer to that trust. Railroad management board failed to do their due diligence for years, should be renewed in the health accountable. There is blatant malfeasance, misfeasance, and nonfeasance. For years, you had nepotism with Mark Bassett managing the railroad and his wife working on, working as a bookkeeper. Both need to be terminated. They have cost the city and the railroad dearly, possibly millions. I wouldn't be surprised if SNS Shoreline had earned enough, more than enough, over the spend of their agreement to buy the Northern Line without paying a dime for rent. That was due to further rental agreement that they had with the city and or the railroad. That's my bit, folks. Railroad needs to come back under the oversight of the Ely City Council and operate under Nevada Open Meeting Law. There are hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees that need to be collected. We need to negotiate a better deal where there should be no sale. Councilwoman Richards, I've yet to address the revenue of the tens of thousands of dollars that have embezzled from the railroad. Yes or no? It's public knowledge, public facility. The concern, this concern also includes Councilman Allwirth and the rest of the city council. I want to remind you that there should be no sharing of revenue. The foundation cannot contribute one dime toward the purchase of that line, not one dime, if they want half. I don't think so. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda items, 10 B7, you're to consider reappointing John Tarchellus to the Regional Planning Commission. We need to advertise the open. To date, Mr. Tarchellus has yet to address the city code violations by members of the planning commission, as well as some of the city council. They need to comply with city codes that they have formulated and adopted or resigned. The city cannot selectively enforce the law. Mr. Tarchellus, as chairman of the RPC, has failed to ensure that agendas for the meetings are sent out properly. Three agendas in a row did not send out properly, Mr. Mayor. ADA complaints and complaints has not been answered or enforced. Proper egress and egress on Avenue D has yet to be addressed. That is proper street width and sidewalk impalement, just to name, just to name a few of the shortcomings. You need to advertise, Mr. Mayor, not just go home.
Thank you, Lord. Any other public comment, either online or on the.
I'm Roger Bishop, resident of Ely, and I just come here to express my concerns along the lines of the, talking about the city considering taking back the ownership of the railroad, of the museum. And I just want to understand our budgets. I don't think the city's budget could handle paying what it costs to run that museum year in, year out. It's a gift that the state runs it, as far as I'm concerned, and I think there's a lot of issues in our city, within our city limits, that that money can be better spent on instead of incurred in additional debt. And that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
This was received from Bill Wolf at our last, prior to our last city council meeting, but we were, let me reword that. He was trying to log on via Zoom, and he was unable to, so he emailed it to me the next day. I was unable to access a Zoom meeting, but I did want to lend my support to Councilman Allwirth's proposal to notify business owners of their responsibility to maintain their landscaping. I would like to recommend that the council also notify those who are doing a good job with landscaping. As a new action, it seems to me to be worthwhile to acknowledge those doing a good job. Specifically, the council should applaud the following. Reed Incorporated, they've always maintained their landscaping. Indeed, they've always been at the forefront of having attractive landscaping at their businesses. Bert Boywood, the prospector, is always taking pride in their landscaping, as well as having interesting lighting. Kent Robertson, Optometry, White Pine Glass, La Quinta, Pure Leaf, so far, they've done well. McDonald's, some of the smaller hotels downtown, the Bad Family lot by the sculpture park. I assure you there are others, but I believe at the beginning of this program, pointing out who's doing well is important. Bill Wolf.
Mark Bassett, Nevada Northern Railway Foundation. On the question of requesting the East Ely Depot and the Freight Depot be returned to the city and the foundation, that is correct. They were given to the state of Nevada 30 years ago. The fact of the matter is, the East Ely Depot museum is not a complete museum. It is just a partial museum, and it is subject to the state's finances. This is like deja vu all over again. We have requested these buildings back starting in 2008. In 2008, if you remember, that was the Great Recession. The release from the Department of Museums was Railroad Museum in Ely to close, made USA Today. And the person who suffered from that, or the people who suffered from that, was the foundation. I contacted the Department of Museums and say, if you're going to do a closure notice, please involve us. We will do that. 2010, Railroad Museum in Ely to close. This was from the governor's office. Here we are in 2020. The state's finances are probably the worst that they've ever been, and I'm afraid that we'll have another press release, Railroad Museum in Ely to close. That will impact us. For the past 30 years, 30 years ago, it made sense that these two buildings were given to the state. Who are you going to bet on? A small nonprofit or the state of Nevada? Turns out, 30 years later, it's the small nonprofit. In the past 30 years, we have raised over $30 million, which we have invested back in the complex. We have saved eight of the buildings from clutches. The building that's the biggest one is the ancient house of the machine shop. We have literally invested millions of dollars in that building. One of the parts of my job is to constantly write grants. And one of the most recent grants that we received was from the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act. And you can see the results of that when you drive down Nevada Northern Railway, the beautiful sign there, which tells people that they have arrived. This is what we do. The museum is incredibly important to the members of the museum. We have over 3,000 deuce painting members scattered throughout the country and 12 foreign countries. They send us money to preserve this, which is amazing. So, thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is John Ginoli, lifelong resident and member of the Railroad Foundation Board. The first issue I'd like to address is the return of the buildings. Seldom that you have a win-win situation. This happens to be one of those. If these are returned to the foundation and the city, it's going to be beneficial to the state, because they're terrible in this whole shake. They're looking at a 15% cut this first time around. That's just the beginning. People are going to be in trouble. So we're going to get no help from them. The bottom line beyond that is, the foundation and the city are in a better position to develop those facilities. We can do things with those facilities that have not been over the last 30 years, period. It's going to make for a much more harmonious relationship out there, a smoother situation. We've got a situation there where you have the state, who is not a standalone museum. If we don't assist them in many of the functions, they can't, they can't exist. So I think, again, this is a no-brainer. It's a win-win for everyone. The second item is the SNS lawsuit. I've been involved in this since 2015, when this lawsuit was dumped on us, the city and the foundation, by an outgoing member of the council. Levittower did bother to tell the foundation, dumped it on us, okay? Been fighting in every sense. Sometimes, people in the business environment, you've got to make the best of a bad deal. We were in a bad place. We were bleeding financially because of the lawsuit involved. We were fortunate, we had great counsel. And once we got ourselves in line with the city, thank each and every one of you for doing that, you're a tremendous partner, but once we got it together with a lot of work, a lot of expense, a lot of effort, we managed to get this settlement done. Now, is it the end-all, great thing that we would all like to see? Perhaps not. But we can't be choosers at this point. We can't continue to absorb these legal bills. We have to make the best of the situation. And I think the settlement that has taken us months, not years, hard work to get together is the best that we can do. So I would fully endorse that we go on with the settlement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, and staff. For the record, I'm Kieran Linda Amitash, I'm speaking on behalf of the White Pine County Tourism and Recreation Board, which I am the chair, and also as a Nevada Northern Railway Foundation member. I'd like to focus on my role with White Pine County Tourism and Recreation. The facility at the depot area of the freight farm is one we desperately need to maximize. We have taken an inventory of our facilities in White Pine County for tourism and for our visitors and events, and we're really need to work on those buildings. The state has not had enough money. There's been great intent, and they did do some initial work on it, but currently, the nails are actually coming out of the platforms. We need that facility. This railroad is our anchor for tourism, absolute anchor. Without it, our tourism efforts are sorely lacking. So please consider that we can take over and with the city as far as partnerships and actually fully implement and develop these facilities. Again, as a former teacher, I would like to see the records more fully archived. It's been years of records that really need to be worked on, and the state doesn't have the money for the staff to do that. We have a curator at Nevada Northern Railway. We can do that, and we would do that. I ask for your consideration on this resolution. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing and seeing them, we'll move on to item three. Mayor's discussion for possible action, approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. If there are no changes, any of the board members would like to see, I want to. All in deferment. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussions? All in paper?
All in.
Any opposed? Very in so order. We'll move on to four. City department reports. Fire chief, he's on the line, has nothing to report verbally, verbally, he says, unless the council has any questions for him.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I shadowed the fire chief's court day, had a couple of questions about his report, he answered them efficiently for me, the one, and the report keep doing nothing but getting better and better. I commend him and his staff for a report quick and right to the point.
I agree with that. Any other questions for the chief or anything to add? Police chief, I don't believe he's here right to. Municipal court judge?
Thank you, Mayor. Were there any questions about the community's recent report?
I don't believe there are yet.
All right. I just wanted to add that the courtesy of the mayor's arraigned, he got a tour of the convoy construction of the new courthouse and some of the services that the city's being sued, the court will be out of putty address there. And I would like to offer the mayor to follow up, but I appreciate that opportunity. And I, you may know, our group of courts, the county service, has a means of meeting court obligations that's been through our most 50 years because of COVID-19 restrictions not surprisingly, but we are looking for the first opportunity to restart that as a means of meeting court obligations and service to the city in the coming months.
Thank you, Judge.
That's all.
Appreciate that. City attorney? Make a report. City clerk? I wanted to bring the council's attention. You saw the printout from Metro, but we did receive a check for our landfill, uh, coming out of $31,845.68. We were also notified by travel data that our several time rockets were caught for evidence. So that was not considered a meeting last week, and we did not get that grant. I also received today the executed lease on the former Arlen Building. The board of commissioners did approve that Tuesday, so our lease is in place now with Department of Public Safety. Any questions for the.
Questions?
Yeah.
Does that $31,845, does that reflect their cost repression in transportation, is that their net?
That's our net. That's the check we received.
Okay, the last. Good. Outstanding. 100% received. Thank you.
We'll move on to city treasurer. Making her report. Any questions for the treasurer?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, but good. She put out the monthly report, and you read the detail in that. I think she very well pointed out that she lowered the budget due to COVID. You know, we lowered it down, we took the salary cut for everybody in wages, but she's commending the employees for watching their expenditures. It's looking good. The very last, I think it's the last sentence in her report, she mentioned, we're not out of this COVID thing yet. And what's coming around, the influx of more cases, the governor's giving us, the state two weeks, so everybody needs to remain focused on, we're not out of the woods yet, but I have to commend her ability to get the staff, everybody working together, because we're keeping the cost under control. I think that's a to be commend for not only her, but all the employees.
Okay. And we'll move on to the city public court supervisor.
No, that's first. Any questions?
Any questions?
I got one. I have one for everybody. My senior report, you mentioned Q and D has been used in cemeteries for the dirt from the M-BOG project. Is that all of our dirt, or are they going to take some back?
No, I, after discussing, I think that's all of them. It's good yards. So use it out there, the topsoil. And for the landfill also, because we have to cover that shortly.
So it'd be. So it'd be, I mean, something to look at in the future, maybe BJ can help when we hit to that point. You know, I meant to mention, we need to expand the cemetery, we need cover, you know, topsoil. To haul all that in our dump truck back to the landfill, you know, we, if you're going to store it there, we have to put graveyard, a grave in there. So it'd be nice if, thank you, Indy, come in your big truck, come and haul it back to the landfill in a storage area, somewhere besides the cemetery. We can't store it forever.
Yeah, they have helped a lot to the landfill already. Purely did. So my, kind of have to find is now down below where the old section is, that's dirt, taking some of that topsoil down there, and then spreading it out and start for future expansion.
Okay, fine. Thank you. You have the city water operators' report. City engineer?
We've been getting together a draft materials, a document for typical things that we use on our roadways, type two asphalt, concrete and such. So we're, hopefully, we'll finish that our meeting as early tomorrow as a draft. We're not necessarily putting it out on the street yet at this point in time. We'll have some discussion, make sure if everybody's okay with how we put it together and then determine if we want it there on the street. But that's just a situation that we put out there, so if we need some cold mix, we know how much we're going to pay for cold mix, we can order how many tons we want or whatever. Also, last week, we received some information from the mine on their dewatering, different things that were going on, and so we've been reviewing that information, and we actually had a preliminary meeting today with our internal water committee, we were, that's why. So it was some good information. We do need some additional information that came out of our meeting today, so we'll continue doing that. And, you know, lastly, we just completed our quarterly landfill report, just a half day, but we improved all that reports. Any questions?
I have a question. Probably refer to our rural's report. He mentioned, you know, the, we saw a train platform, no internet, cannot work on quarterly reports. Did we get that trend out? Okay, then on the second page, the skaters. get that trend dropped? Okay. Then on the second page, the SCADA is not working, the internet, found the modem had failed. Is that correct?
Yes. It was that. The average white park and herb loss there in the...